The Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No changes to the agenda?
Just a couple of items under reports that aren't noted on the version of agenda the council has. I have a quick item under administration related to department head and attendance at council meetings, and then I have a couple of quick updates under department.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Timmons, second by Julius. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Please Chief, no counting.
Well, just because you can't count.
No one asked, but please.
That sounds good.
It passed.
Chief, could you remove the disturbing influence in the audience?
Wow.
No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements? Public comment? Any public comment this evening? Going once, twice, three times? Public comment is closed? Consent agenda? Anybody have any questions on any items or want any items pulled?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Berg, second by Timmerman. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. No public hearing? General business?
Item we have under general business tonight is a request to the city council. It's authorized the city administrator to begin negotiations with Bolton and Mink Incorporated regarding contract for city engineering services. Council recall that the council had pursuant to our financial policies reviewed city engineering services at least every three years. As part of that discussion, however, the council identified that even though we do periodically review our core consultants, with all of them, and it's been at least a decade since we'd actually done on the formal RFPs, and that it would be good public policy and public interest, even if the city is satisfied with those services, to go out to the market on at least an every nine-year cycle, every third time, to go out and request for proposals regardless. The first core consultant that was identified was the engineer that makes sense, city engineer, probably from a dollar standpoint, is the engineer, is the consultant which we pay the most to within the budget as a whole. The council had had a discussion with staff to talk about what they were looking for in consulting firms. The council indicated it was looking for kind of a turnkey firm, a firm that has a lot of depth, a lot of capacity, and kind of a one-stop shop for our needs for consistency, efficiency, and expertise. Based on what had come out of those discussions, staff had identified a number of firms, dozen firms to solicit proposals from. The council indicated that we would do a limited solicitation based on firms that had were known and solid reputation, appeared to meet those criteria. All those that were solicited, six decided to submit proposals. The council had established a selection committee which consisted of those staff members that worked most closely with the city engineer, and council member Timmons and council member Julius. The proposals were evaluated. That was a, I guess what you call a qualitative assessment with a special weighting on the lead engineer and the strength of the team, but basically the general thought is regardless of the firm, the specific people that are assigned to you are going to be the biggest determinant on the quality of service that you receive. Based on that, on those scoring, there were two firms that stood out from the rest. Bolton and Mink was significant, the top firm for every, each of the evaluators, and stood out significantly from the rest of the firms. WSB was the clear second highest-ranked firm. The other component, of course, was cost. The one thing we found when we received the proposals, that firms have a variety of ways in which they structure their fees. And so there's, was trying to create an apples-to-apples comparison. The way in which we did that is we established basically a sample month of services that the firms would provide, and then we applied the rate structure they provided in their proposals to that. What we found is that there was a range. We found that there were a couple of firms that were significantly higher on that, and then there were a couple of firms that were significantly lower. The firms that were significantly lower, the one general element of that I can describe is you got what you paid for. Generally, the teams were not as experienced, the firms themselves did not have the same depth of bench, and so on. The top three firms actually from the qualitative analysis surprisingly were right in the middle, and they were very, very close with regards to cost comparison. Based on the qualitative and the cost analysis, the selection committee decided to interview the top two firms, which were Bolton and Mink and WSB. Both firms have offices in Burnsville, just up the road. Following the interviews, the selection committee made a recommendation to the council to negotiate contract with BMI. I would ask both Trish and Joe to enhance on it, but the long and short is that both firms were very solid, but there wasn't enough difference between the firms to justify going to another firm. One, the firm you have is doing a good job, they have organizational knowledge of our city, and the other firm to certain extent is unknown. You're taking a certain amount of risk anytime you switch firms. And so the recommendation tonight to the council is to direct the city administrator to negotiate with BMI. The intent is not to take the proposal as presented and simply attach it to an agreement. The intent is to take a look at it, go through it, whether it's fees, types of services provided, or whatever, and provide feedback and counter and come back with something that staff feels is fair or in our best interest, and present that to the council. It should be noted that during the process, like some of the other firms, BMI was indicated they were very open to the subject of negotiation and elements of the proposal, and would be flexible to the degree that they could to meet our needs. So we will take a look at that and have those discussions. My intent tonight with the council is not to make specific recommendations on negotiation points, not to discuss specific negotiation strategy, because the reality is, we need direction from the council that that's the firm we want to work with. I'll sit down with Cory, Renee, talk about services, and we'll identify those negotiation points we want to bring to the table when we sit down with BMI.
You want to go first?
I don't know that there's much to add with to what he said, other than I had a strong, you know, as we sat down with the two firms, both firms were qualified and could do the job. There was no question that both could do the job, but in discussing with staff and individuals that work with our current engineering firm, there's a good rapport with individuals that we already have, the history and knowledge of the city. While another firm can learn that, there's a time to, you know, the history of having, knowing where everything is when somebody asks a question, and not having to go refer to a document, the time that would be lost just researching items. I personally don't have a concern with our current engineering staff, so I didn't see a real reason to jump. There was nothing that said wow from the other firm.
I think that's well played. I was, I was a little more on the fence when we kind of deliberated afterwards. Yeah, I think there's, I liked WSB. I liked the potential city engineer that we would be receiving. She's done a lot of work close by in Lakeville, is very familiar with the area, I think actually lives in Prior Lake, so is very familiar with our area specifically. But, you know, at the end of the day, there, the differences between, I mean, what you're sacrificing by giving up, you know, Rich, who's been our city engineer for a long time, versus what we would be picking up from WSB by bringing in someone new, it didn't seem, and maybe it was their presentation, but it really didn't seem as though there'd be enough being made up for, to make up for the experience Rich has with the community. So I really had no problem. I think it was a good exercise, it was a good experience, we got some good information, and if, I walked away from that feeling better about BMI being our, being our city engineer, so.
Can I just throw one thing in there? There, there were some things that we did learn in the presentation and in the interview process with the engineering firms, of items that we would potentially ask BMI to perhaps offer, that maybe they don't today. So we, so the process, while we, we chose to stay, or are recommending that we stay with the existing firm, we did learn some things of, things that maybe we could have that would enhance what we have. So, you know, that was an add, I thought, to the whole process.
I think it's good to believe there is benefit to the process.
Absolutely.
There were some things that you guys have discussed that will go back into our negotiations.
Yes.
One thing, one more thing I want to add, and then I'll stop talking, is, you know, I think there's a case that you, that you could make, that maybe make change for the sake of change, could maybe add something, maybe new ideas, you know, new personnel come in, they look at, you know, different development projects and opportunities, and maybe they find something that we hadn't thought of before. Is that really worth making a change? I mean, that's a pretty big if, and I just, at the end, couldn't, I couldn't wrestle with that being a good decision to do, or a good act to make.
Sounds good. Do you, any of you have direct questions of us, or?
Was there any questioning? I mean, the only thing, the only thing I worried about is when the next big project we do, what if there's a mistake? Who's responsible? That's my biggest.
And we did touch on, so the interview questions were the same for, for both, and one of those was, you know, you make a mistake, give us examples of if you make a mistake. Well, of course, Rich could use, I mean, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, he could use Alcoa Market examples, but they both, you know, they take ownership. Both, both would take ownership if they made a mistake, and look at the responsibility and the cost.
And I would add to that, Mr. Mayor, the, the really, their answers were pretty much the same.
The same.
I mean, there really was no difference between.
And we, we have proof in the pudding with our existing. We don't know, you can say anything you want in any interview.
Well, and it was, it was interesting to point out that the other firm didn't have a problem coming up with an example of where they-
Of mistake.
Of a mistake as well.
More than one.
It's, it's just, I don't know, I, I still think of the one big mistake that they made, and what we got out of it was a used popcorn popper.
I think that's completely accurate. We could go back and pull the details if we needed to.
We, the city, the city-
I don't think that's accurate.
The city paid for a $130,000 project that wasn't approved. That their, their project supervisor was supposed to be overseeing the project, and if he had completely done his job, it wouldn't have got, it wouldn't have happened.
That's not an unreasonable point, but.
And I'm not saying that, all, all I'm saying is, as long as we're cognizant of that, and we make sure that in future projects, that there's something in the contract to make sure to those points, I'm, I'm all for it.
To be honest, I approach this looking at, I mean, I approach it with a, with a, as much of an open mind as you can possibly have, but, you know, those, you know, issues like that you point out were things that were on my mind. I mean, is there, is there, just this, is maybe just the quality of work, or the quality of oversight just maybe not good enough? And, you know, I just walked, walked away from both interviews thinking, the exact same process probably would have played out with WSB versus BMI.
Mistakes happen.
They do, you know, I, I feel the sentiment that maybe that people should be held accountable. I don't necessarily disagree. Yeah, I think that's kind of where you're going with it. But at some point, I don't want to miss the forest for the trees and go for the best decision.
But to your point, Mayor, I mean, that certainly is something that is, Tom, for negotiation points or whatever, clearly something that we can look at.
I just want to protect the taxpayers from future mistakes, and that was-
I think we're on the same page here.
Agreed.
I'm not disagreeing with your decision. Bolton Mink is a fantastic firm, Rich is a great engineer, and I've been, I, I was there when he opened bids for our water treatment plant and saw the tears running over his face. And that's why the, that other part of the bid happened.
Yeah, if you're open to a motion, I'd make a motion.
Make.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Patricia.
No, that was Kate. It was Kate.
It was Kate? I didn't care.
It's okay.
I couldn't tell.
That's okay.
Both your lips are moving.
We're right here.
Both your lips are, all in favor? Aye.
Steve, you good on this one?
I, I'm, I'm a rip rain, I think.
Rip steam.
Unless there's a tie. No.
There's five of us, Steve, how would there be a tie?
It's going to be a weird tie.
You kind of like the tie you're wearing.
It's my personality.
And thank you, Rich, for all the work you did, you do it listening.
Yes, absolutely.
Move on to reports. Just administration?
Yeah, just a quick item. So as you guys know, Steve and Cory attend council meetings when they have their monthly reports and/or when they have other items, actual action items related to the departments on the agenda. What I've seen over the last several months is that when they're here and don't have a specific action item on the agenda, their participation in the meeting generally consists of, you have my report, do you have any questions, of which there generally isn't, or generally, and appears the questions are generally of a nature that they could be asked outside of the meeting, or, hey, it's convenient because you're here. And although we really appreciate their attendance, I do think, I'm basically asking is, do you guys need them here at every meeting? So if they don't have a specific action item, or unless you specifically request to be them there, can they be not here?
I don't know, ish, I, was it, no?
Geez, sorry.
I have no issue, I don't have an issue with Cory not being here. I actually like Steve being here, if he doesn't mind.
For security purposes?
For security purposes.
There is something to be said for that.
I, I appreciate that, so.
I-
If he's okay with it.
I, I don't mind, when they're not, when they don't have a report, I really don't care. I, if they're here, if they have a report, I think it'd be good to have them here.
One, one thing I'll note is that on nights that he isn't here, the chief asks one of the officers on duty to at least poke their head in and stop through during the course of the meeting, so.
Yep.
I'm not going to say anything about the other security feature we have to let anybody know, but they're all always on call. One thing I would like is at least twice a year to have them show up at a meeting, so we as a council can thank them for the different, some of the different things that they do for our city. I mean, Cory, we can't ever tell Cory and Steve enough how good a job they do.
Can we do that during the staff lunch?
Yeah, and they'll be here more frequently than twice a year.
Yeah. Let me, I'm not saying I don't want to come here.
No.
It's just, I have much better things to do than-
Wow.
When I have, when I have nothing on here, just, just my monthly report, you know, that, you know what, if there's a question on that, I mean, I'll still submit that every month.
And we can, we can send you an email.
Yes, I would, I would like that, because rarely ever do I get a phone call or an email, and, I mean, if you have a question, I'll, and if, if I need to be here, I'll be here, it's just, every two weeks, it's, every-
So my philosophy as a coun, as a, as a city administrator with the council has been, we have had over the years fairly high turnover on the councils, and I think there's a need for the council to know their department heads, but there hasn't been a lot of turnover recently, and there isn't been a lot that they have contributed, needed to contribute to the meetings if they didn't have specific action items. I just think it's a bad use of resources, they have to come every day to discuss.
I don't disagree.
I guess the other thing I'd say is, I mean, so you guys will know when there's something that, maybe it's not Public Works, but even your comments today about, you know, the gas station stuff, I mean, you have some expertise, some knowledge and stuff that you guys chime in, even if it's not really, and so, yes, I mean, as long as, because I appreciate that, and you, you give a different perspective that I would never even think about, so.
We usually, a lot of times then at the project staff meetings, because they're the Tuesday before, I mean, we know at that point, it's like, yeah, I'm going to, I mean, there's even times at work sessions where it's like, oh, you know what, I have to be at the work session because there's a good possibility that there's a security question or something that's going to come up on this that I need to answer, so, yeah, we do pay close attention to that.
But I think to, to the points that whoever made, I mean, I think then the onus can be more on us too, to reach out to you guys, and the off times too, where we can reach out and ask some of these questions.
So I'm kind of on my own for wanting them here monthly for their reports, it sounds like, so, which I am not going to sleep over.
We know where to find you. So are you just looking for direction?
It's an expectation from council, do you really need them here or not? They're happy to accommodate you, but.
Do we have a consensus that we don't need them here, except when we have questions and we should relay those questions in advance?
And if I'm doing my job, reading the packet in advance of the meeting, and if I have questions, I should be able to follow up and/or say, hey, it'd be beneficial for you to come.
Or if we have a question and we relay it to Tom, Tom can let them know to be here, even if it's not something that's on their report.
And even if I'm not here, I'm usually available by text or email, and I usually-
You guys know more than once I have got response during the meetings.
You need to respond pretty quick. So I think there's a majority of the people don't have-
I think we have the direction.
Unless they choose.
Unless you guys want to come.
Whatever, I changed my mind, I don't want you guys.
Move to the city and run. Public Works, any questions on Cory's report?
Well, there's a couple things, it's, it could be dumb snow anytime. We did, we did interview two people for a seasonal spot, neither of them worked out, so we have reposted, so we are short right now, so.
Short two?
No, one, just one.
Okay.
Yeah, we're short one right now, but for the last two snowstorms, we've been short one, and then you get somebody who goes out of town on the weekend, and that, I mean, they take vacation, and it, it happens. They're able to make things get done, and then when things break, then you fix them, and it's a long process, but I'm ready for spring.
Sure.
I have nothing else after that.
You're ready for cutting ribs?
That doesn't happen.
I think we got a bunch to fix.
Okay, Police Department.
The only thing I'd like to update the council is I had written a report to keep them updated on the hiring process as of today, well, tomorrow will be the second week that the ad's been open. As of today, we have 14 applications.
Wow.
We've had more inquiries from, or just messages from police officers, other agencies saying, I'm sending so-and-so down to you, told them, you know, apply, apply, I mean, great response, the numbers just aren't there yet, but historically, the last two hirings, the last week, we really get flooded with the button applications, so keeping my fingers crossed that that's going to happen again this time, because I'm not really excited right now.
Right. If you can, can't answer us, that's fine, but is there any, does the fact that Alcoa Market was named like the safest city in America, does that have any impact on the, whether candidates would want to come here or not want to come here?
I don't know if that does. What I will say that might have some impact is the size of our city and the size of our department with a lot of younger people coming out, and that'll give you another reason too, but coming out, it might be, it's a little too quiet for them. I, I think back to 1989, I just dated myself, that I was young, what?
I was nine.
Let me take a knee.
But, you know, you have tendency, it's like, let me go where it's a little more busy and action, but at the same time, there is, it'd be said, there's a lot of candidates out there that, you know, like to work in a nice community too. So I don't think that's a real big factor, Joe, about being the safest city.
Okay.
What is a factor is the number of applicants there actually are. My wife teaches law enforcement. Now, it's in a high school setting, it's in a large class. You can urge college credits towards, you know, criminal justice. The last two, she went from at least when she'd have a class of 20, 25 students, where at least half the class had the interest, they didn't just take the class from elected, they had an interest to pursue criminal justice, at least half of the class would be, to now where she will say, maybe a quarter of her class has an interest, they say, yeah, no, this is something I want to pursue, to where it's now, it's just like, well, it's an elected, and we thought it was going to be an easy class, but you proved us wrong, Mrs. Morrison, but, but no, the mindset of the profession and the amount wanting to pursue it has changed. So of course that's going to hurt-
Sure.
-the numbers. Yeah, I'm, I'm not freaking out at this point with 14 applications. I really think in the next two weeks, we'll get an influx of them. We've had two of our applicants already ride, currently one is riding with Josh right now, just to get, you know, more understanding in that. So the interest, I mean, we do have some interest, I expect us to have more. I was just, was kind of hoping we'd have a few more applications at this point, so.
Did John have a ride along in the last couple weeks, per week? My wife thought she saw John with a second person riding with him, and I said, well, maybe it's an applicant.
No, we had two, they both rode with Josh, and then we have another one next Thursday that will be riding with Melissa, so, we'll, we'll get more. I was just hoping that tonight I'd be able to at least tell you that, yeah, 28, you know, double the number.
It could potentially be our chaplain too, he does do ride alongs with the officers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
At this point, Tom, yep, it probably was.
Probably, okay, Gordon.
Because he, he's been making his rounds with the officers again.
Oh, okay.
James, surprise you didn't know, Gordon.
So after hearing Steve, the half-class full guy in the room, will, will tell you that, one of the, and Bob will attest to this, one of the things that we have heard in the interviews, on the positive side, and Trish has heard this as well, is that a lot of candidates are, a lot of the candidates, the better candidates that we received are choosing to apply here, they're just not going everywhere, they're being selected more, they're applying, and one of the reasons that they want to come here is because of the culture of the department, from what they heard about it, but also the level of community support for the department, and over the last few years, you can imagine why that's very important to, to, and so that is on the positive side, we're three yards to our recruitment, but Steve's right, we went to loss control seminar last year, and the topic was recruitment and retention, and a lot of, I know millennials get maligned sometimes unfairly, but what they're talking about is with the new officers coming up, it's the, I want to, I don't want my personal time to, I work hard, but I don't want my personal time to be impinged outside of that, I don't want to work evenings, I don't want to work weekends, I don't want to work holidays. Guess what? If you're a police officer-
And a new police officer.
And a new police officer, guess what?
You're at the bottom of the total pool.
Yeah, so the, the numbers compared to, I've talked with senior law enforcement officials involved in hiring process in a variety of agencies, and I remember I was talking to somebody with a metro area sheriff's department who's in the command structure, and they were talking about, you know, I remember X number of years ago, we used to get, you know, like 200 applicants, and you'd have six that you could choose from, and as a matter of splitting hairs, now you might get the same number of applicants, but you might have, yeah.
Yeah, two, yeah.
Well, to put it in perspective, St. Paul just went through, while they're currently going through a hiring process, but their application process, normally they get four to 500 applications, which you would expect from St. Paul, about 200, it's like, that's awesome.
So we have, although, as you know us from Steve's reports, in our recent hirings, we have been receiving application pools that are consistent with cities much larger than us, so we have been good at least with the pool size, and we've been able to pull, as you know, solid candidates out of those pools, so.
And then the only other thing that I want to make note of, and I'm sure that you, a lot of you heard, I know you got, I believe a council update from Tom, where you kind of did a Facebook post on it, and I'm sure in social media you heard, when you get the safest city award, you sit there and it's like, oh, please, 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 and then, yeah. And then, yes, but, uh, our officer Melissa, along with the assistance of Scott County, did a fabulous job catching those two burglars and had great cooperation from the sheriff's office with the detective that processed the car and DNA swabs from the suspect and printed it, and I mean, uh, letters were sent to the sheriff on behalf of the two deputies and the detective for their assistance.
That's awesome.
You were very proud of that award, obviously. She always sit there, it's like, oop, but it was nice when something like this happened and we were able to back it up, so. Yeah, but Melissa, for the officer, did a phenomenal job.
I I was almost afraid when we got that re- award that it would, all of a sudden, people would think we didn't have much of a police force because we were that safe, and we would have people coming into our city to do exactly what they did. And catching them, it sends a big message, because that gets out there. Thank Melissa and Scott County again. Fire Department?
Uh, just the two really quick updates. Um, one, uh, New Market Township did approve the two thousand seventeen and the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty contracts that they're meeting on Tuesday night. So we don't have to spend a lot of time on contracts for a couple of years, which is nice. That's, has not been the case. And the other item is, you can expect in April that the relief will be coming forward with their request for the change in benefit. It will be fairly substantial, um, even though all doing part is to the performance of their investments, um, last year. But the biggest change is actually, if you recall, we reduced the amount of the funding level from a minimum of ten percent to seven percent. So that allows them a year where they can take that and put that into the increased benefit level, so there'll be a one-year big bump because of that, but, um, the amount they're asking for is in excess of seven thousand dollars per year of service, which puts them very, very highly ranked within the state with regards to level of benefit.
To be totally honest, as far as benefits go, I wouldn't, I would not object to our fire department being number one as far as getting benefits for, because what we pay them at the end of their career still doesn't come close to covering for one full-time firefighter for about a year and a half. So it's.
Yeah, we don't have the same issues with recruitment and retention that other departments do. It 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 helps.
I thought we were having issues with that recruitment and retention of firefighters.
We have been recruiting, um.
Or is it just our problems aren't as bad as others?
Our problems aren't as bad as others. Uh, you look at departments and they can't find daytime firefighters, and they're starting to look at daytime crews because they can't meet their call loads. Um, it, we have had the, the issue that we're really looking at is we do need to start backfilling. A large portion of our department is currently eligible to retire being fully vested. They have a twenty years in, or they're very close to having a twenty years in. So we have been aggressive in hiring, so we're going out every spring, and we'll be going out here in the very near future, posting again this year. And so we have been able to backfill as fast as we've seen retirements, but it, we do have to be aggressive in our hiring. Todd and I though believe that we don't, we also want to maintain our standards with regards to the quality of individuals we hire. We've had very good looking at it over the years, so.
So if we keep hiring every year, if we, what is, what is our current number of firefighters and what is our max that we allowed?
We're at twenty-five or twenty-six. We're currently authorized up to thirty by the council. So our goals, we usually hire as close to thirty as we can, given the the pools that we have, so.
So I'm going to suggest if we get in the next couple of years, get good fire applicants. And if we can go over the thirty and we authorize that, so we have more firefighters as, because there's a lot of them that can drop off anytime. So it might be a good idea to raise that limit from thirty, authorize them to go up to thirty-two or thirty-four until we get a core that's, you're not going to retire in the next ten years.
So we can assess that, won't it?
We we do, and Todd and I have discussed this many, many times over the years, and his thought is you want to hire them in bundles, where you count two or three that are going through at the same time, and so there becomes a natural staggering of current years of service on the department. You don't want to have a glut of a bunch of people in a very tight pack, because then, of course, the tendency is then they'll all retire in a similar timeframe. And we've been very good, we've been very good with that over the last several years. Uh, right now, as long as we can recruit annually, um, at least two firefighters, I think we're, two to three firefighters, I think we're doing, we're doing well and we'll meet our goals. Right now, Todd's not telling me that he needs more, more bodies than the thirty that we're authorized. We just need to make sure we bring out enough board, onboard to backfill the retirements, and we seem to be doing that.
Any questions? Engineering?
Uh, the roundabout concept design project that we're working on, we've now completed the public outreach portion of that for our scope. Uh, that involved a business advisory meeting where we got a list of downtown businesses contacted then by email and telephone. Uh, that meeting, we had eleven, um, community members show up, nine were business owners, two were chamber members. Then we had, uh, this week, a public open house, and that was advertised largely by social media on the city's Facebook page and, uh.
Nextdoor.
And Nextdoor. Uh, we had eleven community members attend that, however, a good share of those were township residents. Which, I mean, they're, they have, they're stakeholders, uh, but they're not necessarily paying for the improvements. The purpose of both meetings, uh, was really more about trying to see what additional features beyond the roundabout the community was interested in. But there was a tremendous amount of interest, we learned, especially at the business advisory in the roundabout itself, the basis of design. So we learned from that and and had more information available at the open house. So a decent turnout. We had interaction with people, um, but as a percentage of the community, it's pretty small. And so the question is, are you satisfied with that level of outreach, or would you like to say, wait, we think we better get more? I I would add that the feedback in both meetings was pretty consistent in terms of the things that were of interest to people. We'll go into that later this month, but it it was generally the same, uh, level of interest in additional features. So I don't know that another outreach would get you anything new, but at the same time, it was only a total of, you know, twenty-two community members out of nearly five thousand.
So that's a, that's a good question. So the intent would be to come back to the council with the information so far and start giving some direction on the scope of the project. Do you feel, based on that, there is a need for additional community outreach or input in some fashion or another? Because there's potentially time, well, there'd be time, but there's also an expense.
There are online things we can do, um, that were not a part of the scope, but could be added, but it would probably mean a delay, which affects probably mostly your budgeting process, I think.
So, and this is just my opinion on it, when you look at the feedback, the types of things that are definite, that we're not seeing any support for as being an extra, seem to be pretty clear. And the list of things that the council might consider, that there seems to be some support for, not saying you should, but for further discussion, also seems to be pretty clear. There's a pretty consistent group both ways. So the question is, if you were to extend, provide for additional community feedback, what would you be looking for out of that feedback? And would it provide you more than you have now?
Is there any way you could do, like, this is, because it's hard to get people to come to a physical meeting. Is there any way, because social media is so huge, to do a poll on Facebook that will say, out of these Alcart items, what is most important to you? Can you number them one through four, and then we can take that data?
I have seen some of the software Rick was talking, or Rich was talking about, that they, the City of Savage is using for their trail system. And it's linked, they have a link from Facebook to a city site where they can not only show where they would like to see trails. I mean, the the options in that was almost unlimited, and I don't think we'd need that much. But something like that, that, uh, an online poll that's linked to Facebook or Nextdoor would seem to be, if we wanted to, a good way to, I think, work within our community being we get so many hits on our website anyway, and our Facebook and Nextdoor, that if there's a link there to a survey like that, we might get a lot more information.
We do have a survey monkey account that we could try to develop some questions. And, yeah, it's just, it would just be surveyed that we would make two.
The only concern I would have with that is, are we going to be verifying, are they residents? And are we going to get a bunch of people that aren't paying for it, that are going to jack up certain areas or or whatever, not pay attention? I mean, that's just the concern I would have.
Well, that's part of the, part of the, what I I saw this software in Savage, and Rich told me that Bolden Mink has the same exact, same, almost exactly the same, and the people to get their answers registered have to put down at least their address, name and, their name and address to verify that they're resident.
So there'd be some filtering. So anytime you do polls, the the upside to it is it provides greater accessibility. You might get the participation, obviously, from people who might not otherwise. Some of the concerns here with polls is the one that, um, Josh raised. Uh, the other concern that you get is that they can create an expectation that it becomes, um, it it's a purely democratic process. It gets, the assumption is, is if it gets the most votes, it's going to happen, so, or.
And if they can't see what the results are.
They will be published eventually somewhere. So when we, I would suggest as we're going through the process, identify this as information order to make decisions, and it's part of a balancing act between what's desired and cost and those types of things, so you can create realistic expectations, um, going in.
Josh?
I just think it sounds like a lot of work, because, yeah, we can collect all the data and then, but then somebody has to take that data and spit it out into some sort of result that makes sense. And then, I mean, are we going to have to do this for every development moving forward? I mean, and I know this is a big thing, so I don't want to minimize that, and we want to get as much feedback, but if it's not going to change the feedback, I I don't know why we go through the motions and potentially delay stuff. I don't.
Rich?
The other comment I was thinking about is this is a fairly complex decision. We were careful in these to make sure we had data that tied the improvement, for example, for trails, to an actual cost, how it would affect the homeowners. And if someone doing the poll misses that or just jumps to the end. They might be voting for something without realizing the end, I mean, that's a concern.
That's true.
I I would be against doing more open houses or more online feedback, because I, you know, I, so I, on my Facebook data, I shared the city's post, I had over eleven hundred views on it. I think that's just a reflection of just how people want to get their information, and a lot, I would say the vast majority of the comments that, or the feedback that I had heard was.
Get it done.
Well, yeah, hey, roundabout or roundabout suck, or it wasn't like, really, the intent of what the open houses were for, there really wasn't a lot of feedback gained, and and I think the fact that twenty-two people showed up at the two open houses.
And half of that was us.
And half of that was us.
No, that doesn't, that's only.
Oh, you took that out? Oh, okay.
So I, I think it would be a waste of time and money if.
I agree.
I know at the open house, how many were at the open house, you said?
Eleven community members, but there were a good percentage were township.
I know, I know eight of them were from the round, uh, the township.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the opportunity for an open house was put out there. It was socialized, it was on social media. You had eleven hundred hits. They knew there was an open house. That was part of your communication. They had their opportunity, in my opinion.
It's not just his post, it was the city.
Right. Exactly. So so I guess what I'm saying is, I I'm I'm agreeing that we've we've attempted, and there's just not interest, clearly.
Which is okay.
Which is fine.
When we get right down to it, when we, all the extra amenities on the roundabout, as much as we may like, some of them or all of them, it's all going to come down to finance. And finance is all going to come down to tax impact. So the the onus is on us to make those decisions.
People are more interested, I I think, in just getting, not exactly weighing in on what it should look like or what amenities there should be, how much is it going to cost?
What's it, what's it going to cost them?
Exactly, right, so.
They want it, but they don't want.
Right.
They want to know what it's going to cost.
Which tells me we might as well just move forward with the information we have and then provide the council information and get feedback on that.
Sounds like that's, we've got, that was what we're looking for. So we'll proceed then with bringing this to you, uh, the next call.
And I think we could spend our time encouraging our residents to reach out to their county commissioners to potentially get the county to assist in some funding. And I think that would be a great way to get some of those extra amenities included.
One thing we have to, I'm going to caution us about reaching out too much to the county commissioners, because they've already committed, but they haven't, it hasn't been, they could easily take away the money that they were thinking of putting on the other side of two for an industrial development, redoing two over there, and add it to the roundabout, and that could delay that project.
That'd be foolish of them.
But you're talking about, you're talking about.
And they're elected officials as well, so I mean, they can be voted out.
But only one is from here, so the other four.
Understood, understood.
It it would be very easy to to see that happen. I'm just saying that as a caution. It would be better for us to encourage community members that live in the township to push the county than for our residents to push the county. Just. Any other discussion on that? Community development?
Uh, I don't have any updates other than what was included in the packet. Do you have any questions about any of that?
Do we have any more idea on the New Market Bank addition, additional tenants or anything like that, or?
How are things going?
Renee, would you be able to come up to the podium when I, finding out the videos, when we're having people responding from the audience? We can't hear nor see them, since we've gone to cameras.
Um, New Market Bank, we have only issued the three permits, uh, or only received the three interior finished permits, and I don't have word of any others that are coming in.
What is the anticipated date that the bank part's going to be open? I don't know if that's public or, I mean, I guess.
I, we're shooting for April.
April.
Maybe we're shooting for me. No, April was the goal, I, whether that's realistic.
Given the weather, maybe.
To be determined, right.
Don't say that to Cory. He doesn't want to hear about snow and bad weather. Okay, any other questions on community development?
Um, I do have one other report, we, you probably have seen it on Facebook, but we, um, in some of our previous updates, we had issued an interior finished permit for a new coffee shop that is located in, uh, Dofridges, um, Strip Mall.
What?
Is proposed to open on Monday.
I haven't heard anything about.
Yeah, soft opening today and tomorrow.
Go get a waffle.
Monday, get a latte.
And get one of their waffles.
I'm going to try and get there tomorrow.
So a soft opening tomorrow.
Today.
Oh, they're sandwiches. They make waffle sandwiches.
They're delicious. Do the pastrami or they had that one today.
I have, I have to admit, I've tried almost all of them. We did it at a Saturday morning men's Bible study.
Hours in the coffee shop, sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Yeah, I just want to make comments on the update. It was cool to see a lot of these updates and like, seeing some of the pictures and stuff that haven't been included before, and I don't know if those are just brand new, or if you just started adding them.
I've reformatted a little bit.
I think it was really nice.
I mean, you guys are more familiar with the projects than, um, what, this also goes to the chamber, uh, commerce, so you guys all get the same updates, the planning commission, EIA, Chamber, and the State Council, and I thought it would be nice for them to actually visualize.
It's helpful.
Good feedback, so.
It's very nice.
And lots of stuff popping. I mean, it's amazing.
I took off some of the stuff that, you know, didn't have, you know, resonant activity, and I tried to make it just stuff that there's literally been activity on over the last month, so.
Have we heard anything at all from Ryan Companies on the industrial part?
No.
No.
But what do we want to do about that? This, it's driving me nuts. It's been eating at me for like a year now, that just, we just are getting no traction on that. What are our options? What are our options?
You could build the industrial park. You could build it, do Field of Dreams, industrial park development.
You can put a row in.
Can we, would it make sense to have Casey or someone come to a council meeting and kind of talk about what he's hearing and take the best feedback?
I think we certainly could. I think either Casey or Dan would be willing to come down to either a council or an EDA meeting and just talk generally about what they're seeing in the market and their feedback as to, are there things that you can do, realistic or not, but what, you know, what are things that you can do that would facilitate?
I think that'd be helpful, I mean, whether it's a workshop or a EDA meeting, I don't really care, but it's, it's really starting to feel like it's been a money pit. That's my two cents, I guess.
I agree with your two cents.
Thank you.
Have we actually, except for a few, have we spent any money on?
Well, there's the A U E R that we coshed on.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that's already gone, there's not, I mean, as long as it's not continuing expense.
Right.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind is the majority of the expenditures have either been private dollars or grant dollars. We've had matches on those, and relative to the total dollars that have been spent, the actual taxpayer dollar has been relatively small compared to the whole, but there have been.
It's been six figures, though, I mean.
Not in, not.
I thought our contribution to A U E R was in the six, no, that wouldn't be a six figure.
No. And we can bring that up, and we can bring that up at times, so what have we invested? So if you're looking at what it would be, it would be the A U E R, it would be the preliminary design for the infrastructure, it would be the actual design for the infrastructure.
And that does include utilities and stuff, too?
That, that's what I was trying to, yeah. So those are really the three, those are really the three big ticket items. And on all of those, the line share was picked up through grant dollars and/or private dollars. But we have made a significant investment, but it's not, but it's a minor, it's, it's a minor of what that total expenditures.
Okay.
But I think, you know, something beneficial is to get that feedback of what else is there? I know, and Rich has shared, you know, how, how do we get it as shovel-ready as possible without putting up too much risk and not getting in too far? But what are there, if there are, any other barriers that are preventing big hits from, or leads or whatever from happening? And if we do need to invest more to attract, to break that seal, I don't know.
And the big part of that I look at is if we're thinking about investing more, how much? And where's the money going to come from? I mean, do we look for maybe a deed grant or some, try to, try to really start digging into it? And maybe it means asking the county to see if some of their people that write, write for grants, look into it for us, because they've worked for us for the roundabout. Maybe if they could come up with something else that, you know, for, for the industrial park to help us. I mean, the only way Lonzeale got their new addition was over a million dollar grant.
Yeah, but that's a, so we, so I don't want to leave the blanket, but we've looked at the deed grants and what the criteria are and the eligibility. And a lot of times, it's basically, you have to have a project that's occurring now and the timing has to line up with the grant cycle and availability of funds. Lonzeale, they did, they got a significant amount of money for infrastructure. They're also an outstate, and they were eligible for it because they're outside the metro area. We would not have been eligible for that grant program. So we do look at that, and I don't want to downplay grants, but we have been able to obtain hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants.
Oh, yeah.
For, for, for going out there. But sometimes there gets to be the, oh, we just have to go get a grant to do that. The reality is that grants are highly competitive, and the dollars usually have very specific boxes that you have to fit in. So we do pursue that, so you are correct, Mayor, we should look at those options, but it's not as simple as just saying, oh, let's go get a grant.
No, does the, does the grant money, is the fact that we've gotten, we've received a lot of grant money and some grant money for this particular industrial park and nothing's happened on it, does that have any impact on our ability to obtain future grants?
No, I don't think so. So we've been accessing the CDA grant program. The intent is to be able to move projects through the process closer to being shovel-ready. And we've actually, they like us because we have received those grants and we've delivered and we have actually moved the project forward closer to being shovel-ready, exactly what it's intended to do.
Okay.
And with that, the CDA is also fully aware that as we've been doing that, we've continued to be a, we're on the list for large projects that are coming to the region. We've been a bridesmaid and, you know, not as brides, so to speak. But that's, there are a lot of other industrial parks out there that don't see any action at all. No, but I'm saying, so, I, I think it might be helpful to get Casey's perspective of what the reality is when you're developing large industrial parks with large footprint users. What are realistic expectations for level of interest, frequency of interest? With regards to that, I think that would be a helpful perspective to have.
And I think it'd be good to, to talk to them, too. I mean, what are they doing? I mean, I, I hope, expect, I mean, they got properties up in the northern suburbs, too. I drive by all the time and see there's, I mean, which ones are they active? And not that they're, of course, they're prioritizing certain developments over others to, to push depending on what leads they get. So, you know, what activity are they doing to, to, and not that we can change it all up, but.
No, but yeah, it's a great point, you know, but.
So, so another part of that might be having them talk about what's maybe, what's the life cycle or what's the process when you're pursuing large footprint users in an industrial park? What does that look like? How do you market to them? How do they do site selection? When you're dealing with an industrial park that's catering to those types of users? What is, what is that, what does that look like? It's different than a single-family residential subdivision or retail commercial development. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a different type of creature. What does that look like? So I think it might be good to get their perspective on it and how, now that they are into this project for some period of time, how do they feel about it? Where do they feel they are in the life cycle, or are they where they plan to be? Are they ahead of the curve or are they behind the curve? I think those are good types of feedback.
I think it would also be good to ask Casey if some of these people, when they're looking at our city, are, are there any other barriers beyond where it's located and the road and the interchange? Do any of our standards or any of our fees affect somebody coming in? I mean, we have to, if we know, then we can, not that we're going to change, change it all, right? We can be more flexible when somebody does get a, come in with a proposal. We will know in advance.
So, last year now, when I did reach out to many of the developers in the community, I got the list from Renee and I called anybody that I could. And when I talked to Ryan Companies, some of the feedback was simply, we're still a little bit small. And so maybe some of this development that we're starting to see, so, right, the bank complex, if we get this gas station going, the possibility of the apartment complex and the new residential stuff that's going in, some of that will potentially spur or impact their ability to draw people into the industrial park, because that's part of what they said, is just your, your number of rooftops and, and your demographic of what you have sometimes just isn't attractive to the players that are coming in. So, you know, you get a look at employment and.
Absolutely.
So that, that was some feedback I got, but it'd be interesting to hear what they say now.
Of course. Did you all see the structure of article from March that related to the end?
Yes.
Can I clarify, too?
Josh Berg said.
Teeny tiny, so I put this in context. We were talking, we were talking about Boston and just, and said, how come New York is teeny, and they might have some small town, small town. And then it just rolled out, oh, we were never expecting to land a, a thing in a teeny tiny town like.
Then she picked that.
But I'm glad, I'm glad she picked that one out of some of the other stuff.
I was walking around in Florida trying to get off the phone with her, but, yeah.
So you feel lucky with that one?
I do.
Kind of scary.
Well, because the, the, he was asking, you know, have you seen any of the, the Minnesota bids? Or have you gotten any feedback from deed or access to all this? I said, no, and she, and it was just about, do you think you should have access to that? I said, you know, some of the things that we've learned, or I feel like we've learned from other things that have come to the industrial park, you know, we've improved how we make proposals and, and how we reach out to them and how we put our packets together. And, I mean, so I think we learn from everything. So I think it would be good for the state to share as much information as possible with everybody that put in information, so we can learn of why we didn't get chosen, what are some things we can improve upon, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I think on that one, nobody's going to share anything, because none of the cities want to let out anything that they're offering.
They had our proposal.
Yeah, deed did, but they're not going to share all the other cities' proposals with everybody.
Yeah, there was a public, there was a public information request on this particular proposal, so whoever was doing the research didn't dare. Yeah, I, I thought the press was good. Any presses?
The more often it, out the New Market is in print, the better. Good or bad, actually. Gets the name out. Good's better.
Bad as long as it's not terrible.
Right.
Any other questions on community development?
Parks Department, any questions on the Parks Department report? Let's see, other committee reports, scale.
A two, gonna be there as?
Is that tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, yeah.
Feet down with a bug in my house, so I'm just going to skip it if you guys.
Okay. M V T A. M V T A had their Driver of the Year awards. And it was very, it was interesting. I could give you the names if I could pronounce them.
It's okay.
They were very nice people, it was. I am an ex officio member of the board, but they asked me to be on one of their management committees, board committees. So I'm going to serve on that.
Which would be kind of cool.
We're getting into, they're, they're excited about coming out here to make a presentation to us on how to, how everything works to get busing. And they, but they realize that till we get something in the industrial park and for reverse commute, we're probably not going to do anything. Although they keep telling me they think it would, small bus, couple times a day to, to Burnsville Transit would probably work well out here. So, we'll, I figure we'll get the information and then we can, you know, go from there. That's all I've got on M V T A. I thirty-five?
So I had Tom send out the information, just so you have it electronically, because it is very impactful to all of us. It's the I thirty-five schedule for when they're planning on the shutdowns. And items of note, I will just tell you right now, they're approaching the age of the, of stage one, which means they're going into stage two, starting in June. What that means is there will, as far as exits into downtown, westbound only, you'll have Third and Washington open, and that's it. And then, uh, starting, let's see, where did I make that other note? So the northbound I thirty-five to westbound I ninety-four, that's a three and a half year closure.
Three and a half year.
And the eastbound I ninety-four to I thirty-five ramp is also a three and a half year closure. So they are recommending that you do whatever this, I don't even know. But we were, they're doing a lot of outreach, but we're trying to make sure that this information, I don't know if our town has any clue.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is there a way that?
So what I was going to ask is, there's some links that I'd like to get up.
So what we can do is, if there are links to that information on the state site.
There are.
We can then promote them on Facebook and refer people to those links.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to do that. So the links, the, the one is on the, you know, the one with the map, on the front at the bottom, there's the MinDOT link. There's a five-one-one app that gives real-time updates as you're driving that we should recommend or could recommend people download.
So they're supposed to be on their phone?
Seems kind of counterintuitive. Let's check our app while we're driving.
Well, you're supposed to check it before you leave.
Right, right, right.
And then the other one, Tom, was, I've got to find where I wrote that down. MetroTransit.org forward slash thirty-five W. So that's a link to alternative forms of transportation, because what they're pushing, of course, is, I think they said there's like, let's just say it was a hundred and fifty thousand cars go through the area that's really going to be constricted, and they really need that to be less. And so they're pushing buses, they're pushing carpooling, work from home, you know, everything like that. So the MetroTransit.org is where you can find the bus routing and things like that for alternative. And that's, those are the big.
Anything else on I thirty-five?
Everybody's picking up, that's just.
Any questions or anything else on I thirty-five? Chamber of Commerce?
There's no meeting today, right?
No, we didn't do that today.
Well, I was told there wasn't a meeting today. That's why I didn't show up.
It was rescheduled till, I was invited back in May because I was told there wasn't one today.
We had not very many people at the, we didn't have a quorum, so.
So I didn't blow it off, I told, I was told last night.
And we, we were told that you were not going to be there. So we were told that you were asked if you could possibly come to the next one, because there would not be enough people present. Okay, so we're, we're planning on you being, for sure. Yes?
Sorry, I wasn't, I think, I don't think I was at the council meeting where you discussed, are we going to be sending alternating representatives to the chamber meeting? So that we have a different viewpoint?
Yes, but what we would like to do is, we would like it not to be like every month that a city council member is there. We still want city staff present.
Oh, sure.
Like, maybe once every two months, three months, a city council member will come, and then the rest of the time will be filled in by city staff.
Okay.
So the big thing is, you got the email from Dawn, just let her know what month and she'll let you know, yes, that works. Or how about Josh was coming in, in April, so why don't you come in June?
Well, I just think it's something we should talk about during council.
Do that, too.
Versus, so that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, is administratively, we're here. Why not monthly just talk about, are we going to attend chamber or not? And who's going to go? And kind of play it that way, if that works for everybody, versus trying to willy-nilly it, because then.
I like Tom and Renee still going on a regular basis.
Yeah, no, I don't think that stops. I think this is an, an add to staff on a periodic basis.
You're talking just simply coordinating the council people who's going and when?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, so right now, we know Josh is going in April.
Yes.
So we don't need anybody else to go in April.
And then in May would be, if you wanted to try to do this methodically every other month, or council member, two months.
So even months.
Staff, one month council.
Even months, so April, June, August.
August.
Couple comments, the, one thing is the change to the structure where somebody, the staff and the camp, a council member would come to the chamber meeting has been super well-received. So it's really helped, I think, open the lines of communication, foster better communication. So that's, that's been extremely, extremely good, which is very healthy and very good, very good relationship between the two organizations. And to the point that Kate's making about a regular cadence, the only other suggestion I, I might offer on behalf of the chamber is that to have a, an every other month cadence as a desired state makes a lot of sense. But it should also, I, in my mind, this really needs this moment on the agenda here for, for discussion, updates from the council, would be to have as part of that review, what's going on? And is, is, is there an opportunity or a reason to break that cadence? If you can do something more frequent, because something has come up that merits attention.
So every other month being the minimum with potential to fill in if there's.
Yeah, and, and that's a little bit of a selfish ask on the part, on behalf of the chamber, because it is very well-received and very well-liked, having the, the open communication, having a revolving, you know, who's coming in in a, in a revolving manner gives exposure to each and, you know.
So is really your preference to have a council member there every month? Because we can talk about that, I mean.
If we do that, though, it, it, I think our concern was, is it limits how much actual, well.
So what?
If we do that, then the staff isn't, I mean, you're allowed fifteen minutes at the beginning of our board meeting. So it really limits the amount of time. So really limits the amount of time that there is to talk.
So Renee and I are meeting with the president, the chamber president, early next week to just talk about meeting, meeting format, what the chamber wants to get out of those meetings. So we're gonna try and work through those details and try and map out the next few months as far as what they're kinda looking for, just to make it more efficient and improve the communication. Not necessarily at the meeting, but about the meetings and what is providing the best benefit to the chamber, so.
Well, I think there's a willingness to attend, so it's really what does the chamber want.
That's, sounds awesome. Okay. Do you have, since you're here, you may as well represent the chamber.
I have to use my hand.
Obviously open, doing well.
All perfect.
Talk about April 5th, Point of Impact coming up.
So, April 5th, Point of Impact's coming up.
It's looking for you to provide updates.
We talked about him today, this morning.
I should've taken...
That's sorry. Sorry, I'm just putting you on the spot and I'm sorry. I shouldn't do that.
I mentioned this, Andy, that we're, we, on behalf of the chamber, I'm gonna come probably tomorrow and chat about a few dates and some ideas that we've got for some things to do together. For example, State of the City, we thought it might make sense to try it as an afternoon or evening event this year. Just a thought, an idea to discuss and, and some other things. So I'll, I'll come in and chat with you about some of those things. And of course, we'll be promoting the Point of Impact event and have a calendar of, of events that we'll make sure to get out there and co, co-market with you.
Sweet.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Sounds like the chambers in the city are working better. Regional council mayors isn't until next week for a scheduled meeting. CCEC?
CCEC, egg hunt. If you know anyone who has small children, remind them that March 24th, 10 o'clock till noon is the annual egg hunt. The one thing I did today that I'm just so excited about is I booked the amazing Scott, who is the Blues mate, the first, who was at the 10th anniversary. He went with the Blues and ran out of time. Yep, so I booked him for that and then he's still available for Halloween that we'll discuss at the CCEC. So things are moving along.
You also did what yesterday? What did you make?
I made an event for the egg hunt and shared it.
So if all of you wouldn't mind sharing it, would be phenomenal.
Get the word out.
Do we have a bunny?
Yes, we do. We have a bunny and...
It's very nice of Mayor Crawford to volunteer for that role.
I did have, I did have a question brought to my attention today and I'm just gonna ask it real quick. Sound system?
What, what's sound system?
Are we needing Ricks?
Do you need one?
Like out on the playground where we did the hokey pokey last year, I think we used Ricks.
Was it Chanel talking about, do we have over there?
I, I couldn't remember. That's why I thought I'd ask you.
Let me double-check because it came up the last meeting, but are you offering it?
If you need it, I'm happy to bring it.
Oh, sweet, okay. You bring up, are any kids with you?
We have lots of kids.
But I will confirm that.
Is this inside the school?
No, outside.
Cause for Cub Scouts, we always have the microphone, we use the internal stuff and we're really allowing it. So I don't know if it projects outside or if they have anything.
And all, we're, there was some discussion at the last CCEC meeting about, you have to have certain licenses if you do certain music. We did have the representative from Lakeville School who was familiar with it, was too...
So we need to talk about that, if we are going to, we do not have licenses to play music at the event.
Oh, cause it'd be an outlaw.
No, because it's an event.
There's some public...
It gets down to...
Now, there's public, public songs you can use.
Yes.
And if you pick a public song, which I think...
That's a really good one.
Talking about doing the hokey pokey or something, that was, was a public one. So, the representative from Lakeville was to check into all that. So we're covering our bases, make sure we don't do anything wrong. Cause that's what the CCEC does.
Does things wrong or...
Sandy crosses her eyes and dots her eyes.
And hopefully you'll all be attending.
Any other questions on CCEC?
Oh, come on, they just got one question.
I'm, I'm saving all my questions for another day.
Are, are you gonna have your good coffee?
We are having Jamaican Me Crazy coffee, yes. That was, that was voluntary.
So we're really hoping the snow is melted. I mean, I know it's supposed to be, but it's supposed to be.
Most years, we've actually had snow during the egg hunts.
We've had so many different weather things, but that's why we say...
But the eggs are colored, so...
Oh no, we're not gonna color them this year.
We're just gonna leave them white.
Just leave them white eggs. We're just gonna leave them white eggs and put them out there.
There you go.
Negative challenge.
I saw a GIF on that today. It was actually really funny.
That's what made me think of it. I'm like, that's awesome.
They bought them cheap last year and they've been storing them.
Okay, awesome. 100-year eggs, okay. I'm sorry, what was the time? My apologies.
Tantil.
Tantil, okay.
Downtown Improvement Committee?
You know, we met and we had one person show up.
It was a horrible night though.
Yeah, I mean, the weather was, was awful. But I think our next meeting, I mean, really not a lot was accomplished. It was kinda just chit-chatting with Jean and talking about roundabouts and, you know, some of the different things going on. But I think next meeting, we're gonna have more of a, an agenda. And it really is, you know, as we start getting closer into spring, there's gonna be more things, the more potential projects and more activities, so. That's all.
How we get to the front one? 50 by 30? I'm not, they only, they had an IZI last Saturday. I have not heard how that went. I did hear before it, before it was, they only had 30 RSVPs. And they were hoping for 150 to 200 and there were approximately 30 staff people, staff and, 50 by 30 members that had RSVP'd, so I'm not too sure how that went. So we'll see how our 20,000, well, not our 20,000, but how scales $20,000 was spent on that. I'll give you, get a report on that when we have our next steering committee meeting.
The housing one's coming up fairly soon.
Well, next Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a combined.
I think so.
Combined with workforce. Workforce, okay.
It's nine to one next Wednesday. There's two meetings back to back.
Well, the transportation meets at 7:30, so I'll be there from 7:30 till 1.
That sounds like fun.
And everybody there is aware, you can pull a plug when something flops, right? And you don't have to keep dumping more money and time and resources into something?
Well, I'm hoping that they, I'm not sure how they signed the contract with Merida State. So, there was no oversight on that. But... Housing is next Wednesday, transportation is next Wednesday, workforce is next Wednesday, so that's all on the 50 by 30. But I thought I'd let you know that they did have the IZI Saturday. And, uh, that what I had heard prior to that was, they'd had 30, the 30 RSVPs. Not to get you all down, but just to be realistic. Although some group supposedly said that they were gonna send some representatives from one of the minority communities, but they had an RSVP'd. Discussion by council, any?
I have one thing. The, we talked about, I think this was January, about setting some standards or discussing some standards for planning commission, but actually it was more so Parks Commission members setting some expectations.
For, for education.
Well, yeah, what, what do we really expect of the Parks Commission members and what have you? Don't wanna lose sight of it and just would hope to, maybe as city staff sees appropriate, we could talk about that more.
Do you guys wanna talk about it? I think I sent out the criteria that we had back in January. Yeah, so, and we were kinda waiting for direction as to when you guys wanted to execute on it, when you wanted to have that discussion.
Are, are there classes or seminars or anything that they can attend?
Well, our understanding is actually was not...
Or anything for education?
For planning, planning and Parks Commissioners' expectations, if, if you wanted to make changes. But yeah, I, I haven't had those discussions with Mark. There are, the training opportunities are a little more limited than they are, let's say, for planning commissioners. There's the Government Training Service and conferences. Parks is a little bit more limited. There's a, you know, State Parks Association Conference and things like that. If you're looking for that type of information, to consider, I can get that information from our...
I'm thinking more of like a workshop topic where we talk about as a council, what we actually expect from our commissioners in the various different areas. And maybe that does involve going to trains or going to seminars or that sort of thing, but...
You're thinking at a, at a higher level?
At a higher, higher level, let's, let's not just, let's not forget about it as you see an opening in a workshop or something like that.
If that's the direction, next time we do have an opening, then we'll, we'll line up that discussion.
Anyone objects to...
No, not.
Are you talking about things like if they're gonna show up for some of the events or how many events or other, you know, how are they...
Pretty open-ended rather than just showing up to meetings at, showing up to the Parks meetings. You know, what do, what do we want them to do at Parks meetings? What are our expectations of them when we go to reappoint them? How do we, how do we really have a, a, a valuation of how they're doing and whether or not we wanna reappoint them? I mean, it's, we, we, we should establish some sort of criteria.
Except you can't evaluate somebody if you don't set criteria of expectation first, so, right? So obviously we have to, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna suggest, just so everybody has done it, everybody should probably attend at least one, if not two, Parks Commission meetings to listen, to see what they do, see how they do it before we just start really discussing it. Cause it's hard to start doing, start doing this unless we know exactly what they're talking about and what information they're given and...
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been to a Parks meeting.
Well, I have never been to a Parks nor a planning, so...
They're both a great time. Actually, they are interesting.
Well, I'm sure they are. I mean, I'm sure they are. We, we see the end result of it here, so it's, it's not a bad thing to do.
How, how they come to some of their decisions is really interesting sometime. And the background on their decisions sometimes adds a lot of credence to what they're doing.
Yeah. And I think when we get the commercial vehicle thing to come through, I'll have some comments on the planning commission stuff too and how, just the process. And I think, you know, how we expect, we want our process to go efficiently and then their process to go efficiently. Cause I mean, there's a lot of steps that developers and people have to do to get things changed or pushed through. And I mean, I don't want one area, it's not just us holding things up if we ask for more, but there's potential holdup there and then they have to do public hearings. It's just a big mess of stuff you have to do. So we want it to be efficient and they know exactly what to expect.
That's all I have. So when would you, when could you come back with some of that?
I don't have the working list of upcoming meetings. I know in the next, the next couple of meetings, I believe we have items scheduled. Beyond that, there'll be a little bit of a gap before we get hardcore into budget, so.
Whenever you guys see it.
Okay, so it, it's not a huge priority, but if, if you're thinking about it, you got a minute and you start, get a little bit ready and put it, or put it on an agenda and if you can make it, you know, look for a spot.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.